All right, where did this go? There it is. Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 26, 2025 meeting of the Auburn School Committee. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start down here on my right with introductions.
Dan Poishon, Ward five.
Quinn Gormley, Ward four.
Corinne McWigan, Ward one.
Pamela Albert at large.
Sue Dora, Superintendent.
Pat Gaudier, Ward three.
Adam Platt, City Council Rep.
Calvin Vincent, Student Representative.
Connor Dufour, Student Representative.
Amanda Kuchar, Business Manager.
Scott in here, Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you, everyone, and Pam Hart and Jay Rich could not be here tonight. Moving on, I will entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, which includes the approval of tonight's agenda as well as the approval of the minutes of the March 19, 2025 meeting. Do I have a motion? Corinne, do I have a second?
Second.
Pat, all those in favor? Motion carries. It does not look like we have anyone here for public participation tonight, so I am going to move on to our presentation tonight, continuing with our presentation of the operating budget for 2526.
Thank you very much. We are going to start with adult education, and Director Tyner will come up and share information with us.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having me here this evening. I'm Jen Tyner. I'm the Director of the Auburn Adult Education Program and also the Lewiston Adult Education Program. Happy to be here. So just wanted to start out, just getting used to the technology. Last year I did not have to press any buttons, so give me just a second. I like to spend a little bit of time just kind of going over what is adult education and what are the types of programs that we provide. And so there are some pictures up here as well that kind of represent the different aspects of our programming. You can see that we have our last year's graduates right there, front and center. So academic preparation is a very large part of what we do in adult learning. The academic programs that we run include the High Set Pathway, Adult Diploma Pathway. We also do a lot of instruction around English language in the community, so helping people who are learning English and coming new to our community to help them to be able to go on to school or to get a job is a big part of what we do, including adult basic education and secondary education, all the way through college and career access programming. So that is an overview of our academic classes. In addition to that, we have several workforce training programs, which I'll talk about in a little more detail in a few minutes. And the picture there right in the middle is a picture of one of our workforce training classes that we ran at Panalum, at one of our local employer partners this year. And the third picture represents our community education, which I hope is one that you folks are very familiar with, where you can come in and take classes in the evenings at Edward Little High School. And those classes really are geared for community, to come in and enrich community experiences. So you can take classes in lots of different subjects that might be of interest to you. One of the recent classes that we just held was a cooking challenge class, which was really fun. And so the team, it was a timed cooking event, and they had to produce different meals. And they had a chef that was the judge, so you may have heard a little bit about that. It's just one example of the type of programming that we run. And so if you kind of go through the bulleted list, there were a couple of new things that I wanted to make sure to make reference to this particular year. I mentioned the Panalum cohort, that's an English language instruction opportunity. We call that our Workplace Literacy Class. We were running two classes at Panalum, so we were able to do two different shifts of workers. Those folks who participate in that class are sort of geared, they work with the Human Resources Department to determine if this is a good fit for them. And they come in and they take class with us a couple hours a week, either at the end of their shift or at the beginning of their shift, depending on the time. And we ran a similar pilot with John F. Murphy Homes, also in Auburn, so we did something onsite with them as well this year. So that was new. In addition, we ran, we expanded our English language offerings to include a class at the Auburn Public Library that we're doing twice a week this year during the day. We have continued to do our CNA state recertifications and CNA training in the community, so that's something that we've talked about before, and we're continuing to do that. We also added an Excel training with Sayer, another community employer partner. And we have done some culinary and kitchen manager work this semester, this past year as well, and we'll continue to do that. We actually have a food handler, Safe Food Handler class, that's scheduled to happen in April with JFM. And we'll be doing another kitchen manager program that will be open to the community, either later this spring or maybe in the fall, depending on when we can get enough folks to run it. And we're working on the development of an EMT basics class so that we can try to launch a pathway for EMT in Auburn as well. Before I move on too much, I wanted to make sure to also mention, I'm not sure if Dr. Doris had an opportunity to share this with you or not, but Auburn Adult Education, and as a member of our larger hub, which is the regional programs in Andrusgoggin and Oxford County, we were recognized this year as a high-performing program. And essentially what that means is there are four outcome state benchmarks that the state of Maine has set for adult learning programs, and Auburn has met three out of the four benchmarks. So we were identified as a high-performing program within our region. And to give you a sense of what that means, we increased our enrollment by 10%, which was, we actually passed that. We increased enrollment by more than 10% as a hub. We had to meet a measurable skill gain that is listed at 39%, meaning that 39% of our adult learners make what we call an academic gain or go up a level in our state assessment. And the state target for that is 39%, and Auburn's data came in at 42%. So we beat the state target. Again, post-testing or testing is one of the ways, assessment is how we determine that. So every student who comes to adult education has to take a pre and a post-test in both reading and math. And so we, the state target for that is about 60%, and we came in at 75% in Auburn. So all good news there. The one target we weren't able to meet is the data match target. That target is determined by the social security number match. We did have 100% of eligible students participate in the data match, but we do have a population and demographic where we have quite a few students who do not have social security numbers, so we couldn't actually meet, we couldn't meet the 90% target. But even with our multilingual population, 50% of our students were able and willing to share a social security number with us for the data match. And the data match is really what makes adult education unique, is that we sort of live between the Department of Education and the Department of Labor. So we're measured not just by academic completion and credentials, but also do people who complete those programs go on and get jobs? And so the data match is how they determine that. This slide shares with you some of the enrollment counts, and it gives you some of the history from last year in comparison to this year. These numbers were taken as of February of this year of '25. And we do have open enrollment, so it's important to note that the numbers are only as accurate as the moment we're in, because they change regularly. But you can see that we're pretty close to on target. We have a slight increase in diploma, which is our Adult Diploma and High Set Pathway, so those enrollments are up a little bit from last year at this time. That's actually not a huge surprise, because we had some staffing changes last year that led to a reduction, and now we're back fully staffed with our coordinator and advisor, so that has helped. Our multilingual enrollments and workforce enrollments are listed there at 61 and 65. And then we had 82 enrollments for our enrichment programming last semester. Interesting to note that of the multilingual population in Auburn, in our demographics in Auburn Adult Education, we are seeing 11 countries represented with eight different languages. And the largest languages represented are Portuguese and French. Structurally, not a whole lot has changed from in the past, last year when we met and talked. We still have a space over at Central Office, which has a classroom space for us to do some small classes during the day. Our main office, where most of our staff work out of, is Edward Little High School. We have a very nice suite that we have available to us that has a classroom and some office space adjacent to it. And that is where we sort of have most of our staff members during the day there, and where we operate out of primarily in the evening for the classes that we run during the evening hours during the week. We have a classroom space at the High Street Congregational Church. We've had that for several years now. They offer us space because it's very close, it's very walkable to a lot of the population who comes in for English language classes. They also have a lot of supports there for newcomer families in terms of helping them access outside resources in the community. As I mentioned, we added a class over at the Auburn Public Library. We're doing the Workplace Literacy On-Site, so our instructor actually goes to those places of employment to provide education. And we leverage some space in Lewiston for our CNA recertification. And that's mostly because we need space during the day to do it with appropriate equipment, and we have that over in Lewiston. I am a shared director, so this provides you the split in terms of my time and how that's allocated. And then in addition to that, we have three full-time staff members that work in the Auburn Adult Education Program. So we have a coordinator-advisor, we have our full-time teacher, and then we have our admin assistant. The fourth position that's listed here is actually a grant-funded position. It's a grant that is really from, it originated with some COVID funds, Strengthening Main Workforce Grant. That grant funds Jerry Gibson, who does all the workforce programming coordination. He's shared between Lewiston and Auburn, so he has time in both places. And unfortunately, that grant is targeted to end soon. It was supposed to end in June of this year, but I was able to get an extension to have it go till the summer. So we're lucky, we'll get to keep Jerry on board and continue to do a lot of the good work he's been doing, at least through December of '25. In addition to that, of course, we have a lot of enrichment teachers and part-time community members who come in to do those community education classes. They're not as factored into these numbers, but that gives you a sense of staffing. And what this slide presents to you is a comparison, so you can see the funding sources for the adult education program. You can see the local share request that has been historic, as well as this upcoming year, the subsidy calculations, and then what we are projecting to collect from tuition and fees.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
On the tuition and fees, so it looks like there was a substantial reduction from '22, '23 to '24 and '25.
Are you talking about the fees themselves?
The tuition and fees, yeah.
So I'm, Mark and I had talked about that back a few years ago when I started. The original '93 to '62, that was a very inflated number. And if you look historically at the revenue we're bringing in, we actually are, I like to say we pride ourselves in trying to offer programming at low cost or no cost as much as possible, to try to keep it as barrier-free as possible for people in the community. So there was a time in adult education where we were bringing in a lot more revenue for running independent CNA programs, and those were bringing in a lot of money to the adult education program. But since COVID, a lot of the rules around that have changed, and so the employers are able to do more of that on their own, and they don't need to leverage adult education support the way they needed to in the past. So that kind of explains where some of that shifting has happened. It's not really accurate to say that we've been bringing in that much revenue historically. Yeah.
Can I ask a similar question? In the state subsidy line, '24 to '25 to '26, there's a lot of jumping around.
Yeah, subsidy does that. It's a crazy calculation. But I can explain the difference. We did have a pretty significant reduction between '25 and '26. Unlike the formula that you might be used to with K-12, adult education, the funding formula for subsidy is based on expenditures. So essentially what happened is we had another staffing issue in '24, so we're going to see it in '26. That's the year where we didn't have our assistant director slash coordinator for four months. So that left some unspent revenues in the budget, which meant that when they calculate the subsidy, it's going to go down. That was a staffing issue. Does that help to explain?
It does. If that position's filled now, does it go back up again in the future?
We hope, yes. There's a lot that goes into that, because it also has to do with, the state doesn't fund adult education in the same way, so it's sort of a moving target year to year, what percent will be covered. The pool of money that they have for adult education subsidy is what it is, and then it's allocated by program. So a lot of it has to do with, if a program, for example, if a program in the state decided that they were going to hire a position that was a full-time position for adding $100,000 to their local budget, that program is going to see more subsidy, because the local has gone up so much. So every year, it's a moving target. We might not get 48% of reimbursement next year, we might get 42%, right? It's hard to tell. Are there any other questions?
Thank you for the presentation. I think it's always important to see the types of education that are occurring outside of, I think what a lot of us would say is kind of the normal track, so it provides a huge public service, so thank you for that. My question is just, I might be naive on this, but I was curious if you could talk to us about any overlap with LRTC? Do any of these students get to take those classes to satisfy diploma, or what kind of overlap do we see between these programs?
Yeah, so LRTC is, I've worked with LRTC in Lewiston for a long time, when I was the assistant director there, before I became the director. There is a lot of opportunity for leveraging the LRTC sites and programming with adult learners in the evening. We don't see as much overlap with diploma at this point. It's very difficult, because there's such a need for the enrolled high school students to want to maximize those enrollments. So what we do get to do is leverage those resources in the evening, right? So when we're doing something in culinary, we're able to use that, those resources in the evening with adults. I'd love to see more of that, and I think as we get to develop more of those workforce opportunities in Auburn, we'll see more of those overlaps.
And that was one of the reasons I asked. When you brought up the EMT program, I was thinking, oh, I've heard a similar thing out of the LRTC, so I wonder if they're utilizing similar resources.
That is not coincidental, yeah. So as we're developing programs, Rob and Matt and I are consistently having communications around what's available, how can we build on what they're doing? Yeah.
This is a question that may be a little bit off the mark, but I wondered how much connection you have with some of the things going on in town, in the two cities with homelessness. Is there any interaction between the groups that are supporting them, where you can kind of entice people to come?
Yes, yes. I mean, I think we can always do more. I'm not in any way going to say that there's no, there's always room for growth in that aspect. But we do a lot of outreach at New Beginnings, for example. So I have a staff member in Lewiston who actually goes over to New Beginnings once a week to do at their drop-in, to be able to promote adult education services, particularly for students who are not currently attending school, because we like, we would prefer that they at least are going to school than not going to school at all. And so that by nature of, it's a Lewiston staff member who goes in, but because we work so closely together, when there are referrals that make sense to naturally happen for Auburn, that just happens. So my staff member in Lewiston will connect with Carmen and say, I have this student that I'd like you to meet with, and that's one example of how we do that.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to revenue. Ms. Kuchar will be explaining how we get our money to run our schools.
All right, to get right into some of our data here. Adult education, this is just another look at what Jennifer, Ms. Tyner just showed us, I apologize. And there is a note at the bottom, this was actually mentioned last year as well. Any reduction in our local amounts will actually affect the state subsidy as well. So we want to try to keep our local assessment the same, or if anything, going up a bit to help, because it will reflect in the state subsidy. So that was a big piece. So we see that the state subsidy went down $20,577. So we've requested a $4,000 increase locally, and then we are able to take some amount from enrichment to put towards the tuition piece, to increase that slightly for next year. The rest of the operating budget, the general fund, we've discussed the state subsidy before. We have a $2.5 million increase that has a lot to do with our population. The numbers have gone up. We also have higher numbers in our free and reduced lunch and our MLL students. Locally, we are requesting a $729,000 increase. That's right around 3.5%. We were able to, although you can see that our naming rights revenue is down $211,000, that was very specific to the high school and the different, there was actually a $400,000 donation. $200,000 was used in FY24. $211 is being used this year, so we have used that up. So you see that decrease, but we are able to increase in other places. So you see just above that, we have an increase of $130,850. We are suggesting that we decrease the amount of money used from our fund balance. And prior to COVID, you saw much smaller numbers being used for the fund balance. We're trying to kind of get ourselves back into that habit to stay below $2 million. In fact, eventually get closer to $1 million is the hope. But overall, we're seeing an increase in revenue at the $2.6 million. I did speak a little bit last week about the debt service versus the regular state subsidy. So because our debt service in our Park Avenue bond and our ELHS bonds have gone down, so has the revenue from the state coming in for that. But we have seen in our general subsidy, the $2.8 million increase. So overall, it's 2.5 approximately for our overall increase. That's just the breakout of those two pieces. So locally, there are actually three pieces that we discuss, although we look at one average when it comes to being a taxpayer here. The state does define the minimum required amount based on the valuation of the school department, so this school department being Auburn only. It did increase by $387,000 and change, just based on the valuation. So that increase is something that the state requires. The local debt service, again, because our amount has gone down in those two bonds, the local amount is going down in that line as well. So the additional local that we're requesting is $374,000. That's that third line. And averaged together, it is a 3.6% increase. So I spoke a minute ago about the fund balance. The audit for FY24 is not complete. We are very close, but we don't have a fund balance amount yet from the auditors. We are projecting it to be around $3 million, uh, $7 million. We did already budget for FY25 this current year, $2.35 million, so we have to take that out, and we're right around $5 million at this point. So our suggestion of 1.75 million not only helps get us closer to the 5% maximum that the state is adjusting, used to be 9% of our operating budget, we want to try to get down to 5% of the operating budget. But it also gives us a balance that we can work with in future years, too. We don't want to use more this coming year that creates a problem two years down the road, where we wouldn't have enough of a fund balance to supplement that revenue. Oh, and in the last couple of years, there have been some capital reserve funds made for using the use of excess fund balance. We're not suggesting any adjustments be made this year. I think with COVID funds expiring and looking at our fund balance amount and trying to decrease the revenue that we're using, I think it would be good to take a year off from that, and then we can reevaluate next year, see if we want to put more money into the reserve funds that already exist, or if something new does come up, we can discuss that, too. Does anyone have any questions? Anyone?
I've got a couple of questions. So, all fund balance questions. My question, I guess my first question is, on average, what are we adding or losing from the fund balance without, call it, the 2.3 million? If we had not written that into the FY25 budget, would our fund balance be growing or shrinking?
The fund balance would be growing, correct, yes.
Do you have a rough, rough range? Is it growing by five figures, six figures, seven figures? What's, because when I look at what we're spending each year, you want to make sure it gets replenished, although you're saying we want to see that balance go down from 5 to 3.5 over time, which makes sense. So I'm just curious what that delta looks like each year.
Yeah, when we were dealing with a lot of the COVID issues, we had a lot of positions that were never filled. So we saw probably seven figures of a surplus a few years in a row. This past year, we did see six figures. We're still in the couple hundred thousand dollar, where our revenue was higher than our expenditures. So that means that the $2 million that was budgeted for FY24 from the fund balance, we didn't use all of it. We did use some, we did dip into that fund balance, so we did see a decrease in the fund balance, but not at the $2 million rate. And the hope is in FY25, a similar thing will happen, where although we budgeted 2.35 million to go towards this year's revenue, the hope is that we won't spend the entire budget and have a little bit left over to go to future year's revenues. Really, proper budgeting in a normal, I don't want to say normal, that's the wrong word, but when we're not dealing with what we've dealt with over the last five years, proper budgeting would have us within $1 million of what we spent. So really, I wouldn't expect our surplus to be greater than $1 million going forward, which is why I think when you look at the history of our budget, the revenue was usually right around $1 million in the fund balance, because we were kind of taking what our surplus was two years prior and putting that back towards revenue in the future budget. So for instance, FY24's surplus would go into the FY26 revenue budget. So the expectation- So the expectation is that we will begin balancing back out to where things were going about a decade ago.
Yeah, that, that makes sense, and I'm glad to hear that we're, we're looking to kind of head slowly in that direction downward. I, I will say, the number still frightens me a little bit, and I know we, obviously, we're proposing to use the fund balance because we need to. The number frightens me a little bit in that even if we keep going down, 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 I, I'm concerned we might get into a situation where even a million dollars a year is still more than what we're generating in the fund balance. So there's a deficit every year out of that fund balance, possibly, to fund our operating budget. That's where I get scared. It's like if, if we're using the fund balance to justify some sort of capex or some sort of one-time cost, okay. But if we're baking it into operations, that, that means at some point, we have to contract the size of our operations.
So I believe there's a sheet in your budget binder that was in there from the very beginning that calculates four years out with what we have currently for the fund balance. So looking at the $5 million amount that I have here, once we take out this year's revenue, there's a projection of how we could use that over the next four years to, to maintain it in our revenue. And that, of course, is assuming a $0 surplus in future years, which we, we're pretty confident isn't, isn't the case. But, you know, we do have a kind of a plan that we go through, and we update it each year to make sure not, we're not, you know, using more than we should. So I think, I think we do a pretty good job of projecting, and we've, we've been very careful with our expectations for FY '25 as well.
Is the fund balance invested in any way, or is it just sitting there?
So we do not have an investment account except for, for our high school construction. Any additional funds that the city holds, it's in a city investment account. So we do not, we do not earn interest on that money as a school department.
If the city earns interest, does the city keep the interest, or do we, we don't benefit from the interest?
You see it as a tax break, you know, it, it definitely helps in the taxes each year, definitely. I would have to actually get more information from the city finance department as far as how they, where they put it, I guess, if you will, how they, how they report that. But I can get that for you for, I could do it for next week if you'd like.
I, I believe it's, it's a revenue somewhere, I think. I think I've seen that somewhere in some line item, interest off of those investment accounts.
Just seems like if our side of things saves money by spending below budget, we should benefit from that.
It can be, it can also be risky to tie up your money in things that make it more difficult to free that money up. So there's upsides and downsides, I suppose.
So, one clarifying question. So on the revenue local assessments page, the total percent change, the 3.6% increase, that's, that's to the local share, correct?
Correct, that is if I increase the $20.54 million by our $729,000 that we're requesting. That's specifically using those bottom numbers, yeah.
Anyone else have questions for Amanda? Now is your opportunity to ask them.
Sorry, just.
Go ahead.
One last question about the, the fund balance. Is that pulled periodically throughout the year, or do you pull that once a year at a time? That's a significant sum.
So it's once a year. The plan for the April Finance Committee meeting is to have a projection, but we really don't close out the year until June 30. And then we still go through the audit, where if there are any errors or adjustments, we make those. So really, it is a once a year, and it comes from the auditors once they feel like we have completely perfected our books, so.
But what you're talking about with the fund balance, you're saying that per, like, state requirements, it's supposed to be 5% or less of our operating budget?
Correct, so that would be, what, 3 million-ish? It's a little higher than $3 million. But the truth is, if we have a plan to spend it down, then we're still in compliance of that law. So I, I see it as, you know, we have $5 million, but if we're, if we vote to implement 1.75 into the FY '26, then we have just over $3 million of unallocated fund balance.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Any other questions for Amanda? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So our next item under our presentation is for us to discuss and deliberate the Auburn School Department budget in preparation for the public hearing that's coming up on April 2nd, and the discussion with the city council on April 7th. Ultimately, we need to do a straw poll tonight regarding what budget figure should be presented at the public hearing, and if we are good with moving this budget forward for the, it's not, we're not like voting to approve it tonight, it's just a straw poll to, to move it forward in terms of holding the public hearing and, and bringing it forward for the discussion with the city council. So now is our opportunity to discuss.
Guess my.
Who wants to start?
Question would be for, Adam, am I remembering right that, that 2% was the magic number that city council was hoping for? And is this something that you think they'll go for?
Well, anything I've said previously has probably just been my opinion as opposed to any sort of collective statement from the council, so I want to be clear on that. However, I do now have, I think, collective information from the council. If anybody watched the meeting on Monday, it, it was very clear kind of where everybody settled. So, no, I think it's higher than 2%. The number that the city coun, so the city council was presented its budget, the city's side is slated to increase greater as a percentage than the school's side. When the city councillors were asked how they felt about budget numbers, we were asked as a total number of, you know, 100 and, 129, 130 million. So when we responded to the question, it wasn't about city versus school, so I want to be clear on that. As it stood after our final additions to the budget, I'm staring at our updated budget summary right now. As we left it at the end of the meeting on Monday, this is with all the proposals in there, this isn't our final budget. This is what we start from to then cut things out. We're at a 10% increase in the tax levy. A lot of that's coming from the city's side, right? So councillors were asked what they were comfortable getting the number to. And again, this is as a total. Councillors, I think the consensus want to get it down to a maximum of a 5% tax, increase on, on the taxpayer. So that's a 5% increase on the tax levy. That's as a maximum, so that's, we want to get down to that if we can get below that. There was no discussion about, you know, we're going to ask the city to cut this, the school to cut that. That hasn't occurred yet. I think you guys kind of know where I stand, I, you know, I, I want it to be equitable. I think that, well, I'll, I'll take a look at the numbers before I say anything definitively, but, you know, what I'm staring at here, there's a much larger increase on the city's side. So I would, I guess, I would just say, I think the school's coming at it from a good angle right now. So perhaps that's where we start the debate, or the discussion here. It's just, you know, I think, Quinn, to your point, that the number, it's, it's better than two, it's five, so that's good. And then, you know, the school's coming at it from a good angle in that our proposal's a 3.5% increase of the tax levy. The city's right now is a 16.8. Those average out to 10. So obviously, councillors acknowledge on the city's side, we'll be aiming to cut, I believe it's like 2 million, or just over two, just over 2 million. So there's going to be some very real cuts. On the city's side, for sure, and possibly councillors will ask that on the school's side. But I will do my best to make sure that it's equitable, given on what the asks are right now for increases.
And just to, just to kind of summarize, so the school department budget is based on no, no new programs, no increases to, really no changes to what we are doing currently in terms of staffing levels, programming. Really, the increases are based on, you know, increases to special education, health insurance costs, and contracts, negotiated contracts is really where the drivers are, I think, in our, in our budget, is that accurate to say? So I think, I think in terms of the school department's side, everything has been done to keep cost increase at a minimum. I would welcome thoughts and opinions on that.
I just wanted to agree with you. I think we've, you've done a very good job, Amanda and Dr. Doris, of being clear, being transparent, and we've always run lean. And, but we have one of the best, you know, we have the best educators. We have, you know, just world-class education here, and we do that with a lean budget. And yes, there are increases, but they're thoughtful, and.
And many beyond our control.
And many beyond our control, absolutely.
I want to think about what our, one of our larger drivers is the, the new ed tech contract, right? And I, I think that's something that we can all agree, we want to go to the mat for. That's one of the larger jumps in expenses in staffing, isn't it?
I mean, I don't know as though that's a huge driver, but it's definitely one of the negotiated contracts that comes with an increased cost. Yep. As any contract does, yep.
When do we get the increased insurance numbers, or do we already have?
We're anticipating those next week, sometime next week. So we'll keep you posted.
Do you feel you've been conservative estimating? Or have we just been, have we been more hopeful, I guess, than conservative?
So we use the data initially given in our, in our 15% budget. And we've received more information since then that the surplus that they've used in the past to keep percents down is no longer available. So I, you know, we're hopeful that we were spot on. We'll start with that.
So you didn't underestimate, is what you're saying, hopefully? Or it's close?
I don't think that we overestimated.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Pat?
I do have one other question. When Pam and the rest of us would ask the admin what we could do to help them, the only thing that I heard was a math coach. And so I'm wondering if you've done some discerning about that, or if you can explain how we could get it back in the budget, or why we have not.
We have talked about that position and ways that we could get that position back in the budget. One place we could look would be the Title Grant Funds. If we see an increase there, there might be an opportunity to put a position there under Title II. So that would be one way we could get that position back.
Okay, so that's not going to go in the budget as.
It's not in the budget right now unless you want to add that to the budget. And that would be about $100,000 to add that position.
Other thoughts before we move on to our straw poll? Thoughts, discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I'll just add, I think, I think whatever, whatever we decide to do, if we decide this is a great number, let's move forward with this. I, I, as I've always said, I think a lot of it's just about, it's not just about optics, but about how we present it. I think we need to be talking about the good things that are happening, about graduation rates, about all these extra opportunities in adult ed, and the growth of LRTC, all of these things. I think these are the things that justify any increase. I think these are the things that other councillors need to hear. I, I do a decent job giving reports on Mondays, but, you know, I think when this number gets presented, I think if we can have some things behind it. I know that my person, personally, my only concern is the large use of the fund balance. I understand it in the context of Amanda's explanation, I think it makes perfect sense. But still, 1.7 million out of the fund balance tells me that we have a slightly unbalanced budget. To have to use 1.7 out of a fund balance tells me, okay, there's, if we're not making the tough decision this year, it's coming down the line next year or the year after. So I just have to say that, and I think there are other councillors who are savvy enough to, if, if they look, watch this meeting or look into the numbers, I think they're savvy enough to realize the same thing. That said, council as a whole doesn't have the ability to tell the city council what to do with the fund balance. All we get to do is say a number. So I get to have these conversations with you guys in these chambers, but when it comes time to sit over there, the city council doesn't get to talk about what we want to cut or add. We just get to say, "3.5% sounds great." Or, "3.5% doesn't sound great, we want to say 3.2." So that's kind of how the city council will, will deal with this. Whether individual councillors do their homework and get into the details is up to them. But you guys know, I'll, I'll advocate for this budget. However, we, I'd advocate for it as it stands now. But obviously, I'm open to hear any other thoughts, whatever people have to say.
To your point, Adam, I think it's always a balance of, you know, trying to present a budget that supports everything that we need and that, in order to support our staff, our students, as well as all of the great programming that you alluded to, and also still draw people to Auburn. I mean, I think, I think our school department is, especially now with our new high school and with the expansion of LRTC, I mean, it's, it's a huge draw for Auburn. So I think that we need to be demonstrating to the community and to people who are considering moving here that, that we support education in Auburn.
I would add, I guess I could say this during my report, but there are two town hall budget meetings. I don't, I haven't actually talked specifically to the mayor how he plans to weave in. I don't know if you'll be there, Dr. Doris, but that's going to be a great opportunity to talk about a lot of these things with the public. I'll be at the one tomorrow, I'm not sure about Saturday, but.
Pat?
I'm also thinking, as we progress over the next couple of years, that those bond amounts for Edward Little and Park Avenue will be going down. I'm not sure how the numbers play out in comparison, but I think that's a good point to make if there are questions.
The large drop in that will actually be in FY '27, because, or, I believe FY '27 because Park Avenue will be completely out of that budget. But the high school, really, the principal doesn't change, it's just the interest goes down slightly each year. So I think we looked at that at about maybe $30,000 a year. One of our large drops in debt service for this year was that the 10-year capital improvement bond from 2015 was a larger one. And so that getting paid off helped us to decrease by, I think we were at about $200,000 total decrease. A large piece of that was that capital improvement bond. But we also have, beginning in FY '25, capital improvement bonds coming back into play. We took a few years off from those smaller million-dollar bonds, but now we are paying those back off again, too. So we will, for sure, see a slight decrease because the large bonds are going down progressively.
Any other final thoughts, discussion? Okay, I'm going to ask for us to vote on a straw poll in terms of moving this proposed '25, '26 Auburn School Department budget forward for the public hearing and for the Auburn City Council discussion. All those in favor? All right? Thank you. Okay, moving on, do we have a school committee student representative report?
There is no report tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Doris, do you have a superintendent report?
Thank you very much, yes. I do want to talk about the snowstorm that we had on Monday. And I wanted to let you know that we, we always go through a very thorough decision-making process about whether or not we're going to have school, or if we're going to have a delay or an early release. And we did that on Monday. And we also work with the Public Works Department. We're all talking, working in coordination. And we're always prioritizing the safety of our staff and our students, and especially our bus drivers and people that are going to be out on the road transporting students. So ahead of Monday's storm, the weather forecast was one to three inches of snow, starting at 10 o'clock and turning over to rain by 10:00 PM. And so, given that information, we had a regular school day. And of course, as you all know, instead of the one to three inches, it was more like five to six inches of snow. So we understand the challenges that this created for students, staff, and families, and we really appreciate everyone's patience and flexibility in understanding with the situation. situation. One of the things that Mr. Anir and I talked about was taking a look at our policy, because our policy, it doesn't prevent an early release, but there's some language in the policy, and this is the language, it says, "The option to dismiss school early will only be used when there are extremely unusual circumstances." So we have interpreted this to mean, you know, if we're out of electricity, all of our, the power's out in all of our schools, or we have a tornado or a windstorm or something like that, we have had early dismissal. But for the most part, we don't use that. So we think it's wise to bring this policy back to the policy subcommittee and revisit that so that it can be a tool in our toolbox when we have a situation like this in the future. And I also just want to give a shout out to our transportation department and our bus drivers and our van drivers and our transportation director, Dave Fontaine, who was also driving on Monday. They did an amazing job getting all of the kids home safely. It took a lot longer than, you know, we anticipated, but they did it, and we can't thank them enough. We have a great transportation department, we're very fortunate here in Auburn. So I just wanted to know if you had any questions? Did you want to add anything, Mr. Anir?
I think another piece in our conversation in terms of reexamining the policy and seeing what we can do about that is also to be sure that we're providing at the beginning of the school year, a lot of communication with families if this does become a tool for the toolbox, for families to be able to build backup plans if we do find ourselves in a situation of having the early release. Because we've always really grappled with balancing early release and being sure that kids were going home and families were fully informed and aware of that. And so it's overall the, the level of communication, we have some things that we're going to be exploring next year with some communication platforms, but also right from the beginning of the school year, really being sure that families, especially with our younger students, to be sure that there is a backup plan because we know that families are working. And so we hold that in high regard in trying to make some of those decisions. And so it's not easy, I think everyone understands that. But another piece of looking at the puzzle is also, the policy of that puzzle is also being really strong and upfront with our community to say, we're going to need some backup plans if this is something that we're going to be able to do. And we started, you know, Tuesday morning, I mean, bright and early Tuesday morning of, what do we need to do to make sure that those things are in place? Let's start looking at our policy, let's start looking at other policies out there. What is, how do they implement it? Because some of them have very specific language and some less specific language, but then how do they deliver upon that? So Dr. Doris and I spent time right away on Tuesday how to do that because it was a very stressful experience for everybody and we fully recognize that and are appreciative of everyone kind of coming together and being able to adapt around that. But that's what I would add.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for addressing that. I think that there were definitely probably some concerns among the community about the travel at the end of the day. But at the same time, it's such a hard decision to make and you, and we all understand, I think, that you make the decision with the best amount of information that you have on hand at the time, and you work in coordination with Public Works to try to make that determination. And, you know, as best as the weather forecasting can be, it's not always correct. And so, thank you, but I do think it's a good idea that we, you know, continue that conversation in the policy subcommittee and, and think about maybe adding early dismissal as an option. Corinne?
I just wanted to see when you're talking about all this, is that with the city's side too, to make sure, like at the beginning of the year, making sure that the, they're ready and prepared to clear the sidewalks, clear all the spaces because our kids are walking in, you know, sometimes knee-deep snow on sidewalks that haven't been cleared. And I know that's not your thing, but how do we address that piece too? Because we're sending kids out in a storm, even if it's early release, and they're not, and, you know, some kids are not able to get home safely that way.
On a, on a regular snowstorm process, I mean, the, the whole thing starts either the day before, usually with me joining them at their pre-storm meetings. So that has been very helpful, we've been doing that, they've been inviting me, I've been participating, and we've been having a lot of dialogue around what our needs are as well as what are the events that are happening that night, the following night, in terms of trying to be sure that spaces are clear. I let them know if we have a typical, our Wednesday elementary early release, and as well as learning what they have in terms of what temperatures they're looking at, what they're looking at for forecasts. And then the next day, it all starts at 4:00 AM for myself of communicating with the area superintendents, communicating with Dr. Doris, coordinating and finding out what's happening, what is transportation seeing and hearing and feeling, as well as what is happening in the land of Public Works. And then from there, we start to try to make that inform, informed decision, start communicating it out to the building principals, to our wonderful school call from Mr. Robinson, whether there is one or isn't one, and just really using those communication avenues. And then from there, we're monitoring and monitoring and monitoring through that. Moving ahead, I, we have had a very, very positive relationship with Public Works and the city communicating what our needs are, whether it's sunny and 80 outside or it is like what we experienced on Monday. They have pre-planning meetings and discussions about snow removal, snow clearing at each of the sites. They kind of go through that process, they review that again with the custodians on what those expectations are. And then once snow is removed, what is the ongoing effort in terms of salt and sand in each of those places? So those are very fluid conversations that happen throughout the school year. And I've been fortunate to be able to participate in them from the school's side as well as from the building's side. So there, there really is a lot of thought and effort in planning on their part, and the partnership has been fabulous in trying to work on that. And we do the best that we can with the information that we have.
Okay, thank you. I do not have a chairperson's report tonight. Adam, do you have a city council update for us?
No, other than what I kind of said to you guys, next Monday is, let's see, last Monday was just a workshop. So this come, next Monday's a workshop and a city council meeting. At the workshop, city councillors will be coming, coming to the table with our, with our cuts, with our proposed city cuts to get down to where we need to get. So you can expect city councillors to propose their specific cuts at the city level. And then again, if they choose, they may suggest a number for the schools that's different than the number that we're proposing. I don't know if city councillors will be verbalizing that on Monday or not, but you can expect us, if you're interested in watching the meeting, to see what cuts we're proposing.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on, we do not have any minutes to any subcommittee meetings or agendas linked tonight, and we do not have any old business. So moving on to new business, I will entertain a motion to authorize the facilities subcommittee to develop plans and recommendations to expand Auburn Middle School to include sixth grade. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Pat, do I have a second? Quinn? So we have a memo linked to the agenda, kind of outlining this a little bit more. Mr. Anir, would you like to talk more specifically about this since you wrote the memo?
Absolutely, thank you. So in the fall, we kind of wrapped up the work with the advisory committee and we brought forth recommendations. One of those was to move ahead with the standing facility committee, but the follow-up, another one of the recommendations was for the facility committee to start that work, to look around at the expansion of sixth grade to the middle school. And from the facilities committee, standing committee side, we really wanted to be sure that we were moving in the direction that the school committee supported. And so we, the memo was written to try to make sure that as a subcommittee, that we were looking for your support of moving forth with the, the notion of developing the plan, developing an ad hoc committee around that, to be sure that we were following your wishes. And if you had a different wish, that you let us know. We felt like we had a good indication that by this group, that you wanted us to continue that work on bringing the sixth grade into the middle school. But more than anything, we're just looking for that, that assurance that you're behind us and we're following your wishes. Through the rest of the recommendations, we've been, we've been working toward them. The development of the middle, the MLL language review process, still ongoing. We've continued to explore and bring on, we're part of Cohort Two for the CDS conversion over to the public school. The RFP is in, we will be interviewing with the finance committee at the next finance meeting. So those things are happening and they're in the works. And we'll, as a subcommittee, continue on the next steps. So yeah, that's where we are in terms of an update. This was just an important step to make sure that we're following your wishes.
Thank you. I can definitely speak to being on the facilities subcommittee the past handful of months this past year, that after reviewing, you know, all of the recommendations from the harriman report, looking at enrollment projections, look, going and actually physically looking at each one of our elementary school buildings, and the larger discussion around, you know, how do we want to deliver education, you know, across the spectrum in Auburn? It became very clear amongst the group that was on this committee that it's time and appropriate to move sixth grade to the middle school, that, that not only academically, but also just developmentally, it's more appropriate for sixth graders to be integrated into a middle school setting as opposed to at the elementary level, and that it also provides an opportunity for those elementary, I mean, for the middle school students to have a more cohesive middle school experience where right now, I mean, kids come into the middle school one year and they're out the next year. And, and it would be an opportunity to bring sixth grade into the middle school, acclimate them to the middle school experience, a longer opportunity for teachers to build relationships and have, you know, more, more ongoing relationships with their students as opposed to this, you know, in and out experience. So, so I think that was one of the biggest recommendations actually that came from the facilities subcommittee. And it also will free up space in other buildings that will then allow us to really critically think about how we want to organize our elementary buildings after that. But, but the biggest piece is moving 250 kids out of our elementary schools in order to free up that space and allow, allow, you know, that next step to occur. So any other thoughts or questions?
You might not have the answer to this yet, but I'm just curious about the impact of this on our specials curriculum. I'm thinking particularly like MISA ed, I don't know when band starts in this district and how that would be impacted.
That is absolutely one of the pieces of what we would be doing. If, if you want us to move forward with this, we would form a sixth grade inclusion ad hoc committee. And that is one of the transportation, food, technology, the, the changes of what that would look like for band, chorus, PE, what are those things? So it gives us some assurance that we can go ahead and start grappling with that so we can have a meaningful plan around all of those components that we haven't had to consider before.
It would allow sixth graders, I know just from like a extracurricular piece, it would allow sixth graders to be involved in extracurriculars at the middle school that they are not currently involved in.
I agree with Pam, but also we need to think about the logistics of the harriman report and how the expense that we had and the information that we received. And a lot of it speaks to upgrades to the current elementary schools. And before we can do that, we need to figure this out. So that the AMS changes are critical to the rest of what we're going to do with that facilities study. So I would urge you all to think carefully and hopefully support this.
And the current proposal that came forth in the, in the ad hoc facilities advisory committee, and, and maybe this will change once we have our, our architect of record on, on board, but it was, it was estimated that, that we can reconfigure the current space in order to make enough classrooms to bring sixth grade in, that it doesn't involve expanding or adding on to the building, but just reconfiguring the space that's already there and being able to bring students in, so. Okay, any other discussion before we, before we vote on this? All right. So all of those in favor, get back to my, all of those in favor of authorizing the facilities subcommittee to develop plans and recommendations to expand Auburn Middle School to include sixth grade? Motion carries. Okay, we have all of our upcoming meetings listed on the agenda. I will note, so this was our, technically our last like budget meeting. We, we return to our regular first and third Wednesday schedule in April. But we do, please make note of the joint school committee city council budget workshop on April 7th at 5:30, as that is different than our usual. Do I have any future agenda items or requests for information? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to one MRSA 4056D for the purpose of labor contract negotiations. Do I have a motion? Corinne, do I have a second? Dan? Okay, all those in favor of entering into executive session? We are now in executive session. Thank you and good night, everyone.